Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of May 29th. We're here at Memorial Town Hall. I'm calling the meeting order at 5:30 PM. The first order of business since there was an election back a couple of weeks ago is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, which is done annually after the election as far as naming a chairperson to go over the agendas with the town administrator and run the meetings, and also to make the appointments to the various subcommittees or the liaisons to the various departments within town. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Marlene. Just to -- well, so the way it happens, and correct me if I'm wrong, is people can just make an announcement of who they'd like to see be the chairman of the board. It doesn't need a second. It just -- the nomination is made, then the nominations are closed, and then there's a vote taken in the majority.
I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Ed Jaworski Jr. as chairman of the board.
Okay. And that's fine. I guess I'll just throw my name out there again, having been the select board chairman for the last year and a half or so, and willing to do it again if my colleagues decide. If not, that's okay, too. You know, we're all here. We all have one vote. And so that's, you know, just wanted to give an opportunity to have a choice. Are there any other -- well, Marlene, you're really supposed to be running this, I guess, as far as if there's any other nominations.
Okay, so you have also -- you're nominating yourself as chair?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And Ed's also been nominated by Cindy.
Has been nominated as chair.
Yep.
So everybody's prepared? We can close the nominations?
Yep.
Let me close the nominations.
Okay. And a motion to elect a chair?
Well, so I guess I would say either my name or Ed's name, and then, you know what I mean?
Okay.
You pick that there's two people.
So it'd be a motion to elect Selectman Ed Jaworski as chair? Is there a motion to make a motion?
That's the motion. So now you need to vote. All those in favor of Ed Jaworski, vote by saying aye.
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 There was a motion, but was that seconded?
Well, so --
I guess there should be -- if there's a motion, there should be a second.
You're both running it.
Well.
Yeah, it's kind of hard.
We don't need a motion. It's just the names get thrown out, the nominations are closed, and then you say, "All those in favor of Ed Jaworski, all those in favor of Brian Moriarty," and then that's, you know what I mean? Doesn't need a motion, per se.
All right. All right. So all those in favor of Ed Jaworski as chairman?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Whichever way, okay. We have an Eversource hearing at 5:40, correct?
Yes.
Anyway, first, before, we got to do the hearing by -- is Eversource here?
I'm sorry?
Not yet.
Eversource is not here yet.
No. Okay. Then I'll go to public forum.
Yeah, announcements.
Anybody here for public forum?
Yes, just a quick comment to the board about the annual town meeting. I, as a resident, thought that the annual town meeting went well, but I was admittedly pretty disappointed in the leaders of the community who obviously did not take advantage of the opportunity to update those that were in attendance and those who would view the meeting on tape as to what the current status is of the financial challenges that the town is trying to address. And given the magnitude, the import, and the months of meetings and discussion, and to some extent, the publicity surrounding this issue, that I would have thought that someone would have taken the opportunity that evening, and perhaps under the article, which was Article 25, I think, which was, you know, for the "any and all reports for the good of the community" article, that someone would have taken the opportunity to provide a brief update to people who were there about this issue, which was kind of, you know, the elephant in the room, so to speak. I mean, we were voting on articles that evening, and the amount of free cash that we had available to subsidize some of the requirements of the community going forward was zero. And we all know why that is. I'm not sure, you know, the community at large knows it, but I think it would have been a real good opportunity for the Selectmen and for the Finance Committee to update the town on what's going on. That being said, it didn't happen. And I'm hoping that the board, this board, will plan to do that at some point, and at some point soon, whether it be a meeting that's dedicated to bringing the community up to speed on where we're at and what's being addressed, and who's addressing what, and what kind of monies are being spent, and what the tentative schedule is for all of the key items that have got to be put together and accomplished in order for Fiscal '17 to be closed and audited, and, you know, the recap sheet and everything provided to the DOR. I'm hoping that you guys would decide to do that at some point, when it is being taped, when it could be available on YouTube, and so the community would know where we're at with this issue. Because it's, in my mind anyways, of that import. So that's, you know, that's my comment.
I appreciate your comments, but as you know, we don't comment on public forum. But as you know, it's a work in progress, and I think we're moving along to continue to address the issues. So is there anything -- anybody else? Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I'd like to just add something else. The forensic report was supposed to come out three months ago, and you guys were supposed to review it quite a while ago. And I'd like a copy of it. And I keep getting the runaround that I can't get a copy of it. And I want to know why, because if I don't get a copy of it soon, I'm going to go to the DA or the Attorney General's office and file a complaint. I've had it. I mean, I --
A copy of what?
Pardon?
The forensic.
Forensic?
I haven't been -- you haven't asked me, Ed, but the Board of Selectmen had a meeting with the auditor last week, and a draft copy was available.
I asked Marlene before. You said they haven't reviewed it?
The draft, the draft, the Selectmen had not reviewed it yet. But actually, the final is on the town's website.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see it on the website, so. Okay.
Okay, just a question. You don't have to comment, but will you later on in this meeting be talking more about the financial situation and the audit? Or are you specifically looking at this Gatsby '75 issue? Because I'd like to know whether, number one, the Board of Selectmen has officially accepted the report, the forensic audit report. And number two, whether, given the nature of some of the findings in that report and the comment that John Sullivan made that evening in answer to Cindy's question, where he said, quote, "I can't say there was no embezzlement," end quote, whether you plan at all to take this to the next level as far as examination is concerned? So it's, you know.
Any more public comments? Okay, I'll move to announcements. You have announcements? I want to thank everybody that participated in Memorial Day activities this year. Even though it rained, everybody came out in force, and I think it showed the patriotism of this town, and I was sort of proud of everybody that participated. So thank you to the residents and all those in the town of Hatfield.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have any public announcements.
And do you have any announcements?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. We do have a posted meeting with Eversource. Is Eversource here now? Okay, so we'll go with Eversource next. If you want to come up to the microphone and --
Thank you.
Okay, I guess you have a petition for a transformer out here, pad mount, as that's basically what you're requesting, right?
Right, exactly. So the new pad mount is proposed to go on the grass belt right in front of the building.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. I don't know if anybody else has any comments? Any other board members?
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. Because of, I'm just wondering, is it because of the renovations that you're looking to go underground now?
Right.
Just because it's more convenient?
Well, the service right now is going from overhead to underground from the front of the building. It's pole number 21.
Yes.
And the service that you have right now is, I believe, a 200 amp or 320 amp service, which is small. And the request came in to upgrade to a much bigger service than that, in which case, we're going to need a transformer.
So it's the opportune time.
Right, exactly.
Okay. And is there any cost difference to the town at all?
There is going to be a bill that goes out once we decide what the design is and what the agreement is going to be. But as of right now, because we don't have the petition approved, and we haven't had the confirmation for the design, there is no charge yet. But there will be one.
Do you have a ballpark figure as to what that charge is going to be?
No, not as of right now.
Nothing in the past that would indicate, you know, when you've done this in the past, a transformer of similar size?
For, let's see, riser service and transformer, you're looking at anywhere between ballpark figure, just rough, 3,000 to 5,000.
Three to 5,000.
And that's just a rough estimate.
Right. When you say a design, you don't have a design yet. What do you mean by that?
The design is the final proposal for the work that's going to be done by Eversource for the new service. However, that doesn't happen until the petition has been approved and the design moves forward based on the town petition.
This is a light pole, correct?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so the expense to the town in the future will be the expense of the light pole?
The light pole itself is not going to be charged to the town. That will be replaced. What the charges will cover will be a new three-phase riser, and then the cable to the transformer and the transformer connection. Because the service is going to increase in size, and so what you, the equipment you have right now is not ready to go as high as the service request that came in.
Okay. Okay, that's something I have not seen or received. It's information I haven't received.
I received the request from Mary Babbitt. She's the engineer that's working on the new upgrade of service for the town.
Okay.
Yes, this is an open hearing, so we're open to public comments.
Question that I have is, is this a telephone pole or a transformer box going in?
It's going to be the box. So if you're, so this is how it faces. If you're in front of the building, there's a pole, right, 2221, that currently has three overhead transformers that feeds the building.
Right, that's a three-phase on there, right?
Exactly. So we're going to remove the three overhead cans, and we're going to put a riser, and it's going to go primary cable to a pad mount transformer, which is the big green box. And that's going to go on the grass belt, and that'll feed the new service to the building.
If I recall, a number of years ago, we put four-inch pipe or two of them going to that telephone pole just for that reason. So I'm not sure if it's still there or what happened, but there was supposed to be pipes going to that pole. And if it is at the pole, why can't you just drop a line down through and go with the three-phase directly into the building?
We could. The idea is to minimize the amount of the outage, so that'll be up to the general contractor. But usually, for a service change like this, they set up and pre-build the new service going to the new meter. And so we'll come, the day of the appointment, we'll disconnect the service that's existing, and then we'll do all the switch over to the new service. Otherwise, the length of the time the town will be without power is going to be prolonged, because that'll mean then pulling the old cable from here. If the conduit is in good shape, then running it to the pad mount transformer and intershutting so that it curves over to where the new connection is going to be.
So you're running a whole new conduit and everything, right, directly to the box?
We're not going to run it. It's going to be the general contractor. So our services will stop at the transformer here. So there's going to be a primary riser that we're going to run, and then that's going to be done by the general contractor as well, the connection to the path to the pole.
Okay. Is there somebody that can look at that? Ed, I mean, you're familiar with electrical. Can you check that? Make sure that can't use the existing?
It's the issue of the fire pump.
That's for the elevator.
What's that?
The draw is a fire pump. And there is certain requirements, the way the fire pump needs to be wired in terms of from the pole and such.
Yeah, it's three-phase. I understand that part.
But it has to be separate, too. So there is some, it's the fire pump as well, the new draws compared to what's here for that.
And the elevator as well.
What I'm saying is the conduit pipe may be there and save us a lot of money digging it back up again.
No, no.
Some of it may be able to be used, but it ultimately depends on the condition, I guess, when we de-energize it. If that cable can be pulled off easily, if there's no cracks or anything, they may be able to use it. Usually, if the service has been in place for a long time, a new conduit is run so that it's in good shape.
This conduit is empty. It was made specifically about three, four years ago. We put that in. Town meeting approved $100,000 to do this job three or four years ago, maybe five years ago. And it never got done, just to pull that line through for the elevator in here. And we approved $100,000 at Town Meeting when I was Selectmen. So I know we were talking, and I'm pretty sure we put that four-inch line in there, so they should be there.
There should be one in use. Whoever the general contractor is can take a look at the line, maybe excavate it and check to see if that empty conduit is in good shape. However, we do not recommend for that to be done while it's still energized, because we, you know, you can make a mistake and think you're looking at the empty conduit, and then start messing around with the one that has the energized cable in there.
This was all part of the original design that was submitted for the town hall renovations that got prior approved with everybody on locations and stuff. So, I mean, and so what you're, what do you feel your issue is with the, is it with the location of that pad mount? Or is it with the pipe?
The pipe, the conduit pipe, Schedule 80, goes from the town, I'm almost positive they put it in, goes from the town hall right by the furnace room here to that pole. It comes up onto the pole. And I believe there's two four-inch lines, pipes going in there, not lines. They're empty.
So there could be one spare. Usually, we ask for one spare. So I think that's what you're referring to, right? So one in use and one should be spare. Usually, we ask for a spare one. So I think what he's saying is if whoever the general contractor is can then reuse that pipe from one of the services going into the building, as opposed to just running a new one, it will save the town some money. But it's if the pipe is in good condition, which if it's only a few years old, it should be good.
Can I ask, what are the dimensions of that pad and the transformer that's going to be on top of it?
Yes, the pad itself is 76 inches by 70. So that's about a little over five and a half feet to a little over six feet. And the pad itself is smaller in the dimensions of the concrete pad, but it's about four and a half feet.
Transformer roof.
Right. So you have a concrete slab that's going to go on the grass. That's 76 by 70.
And how high?
It's only going to be about a few inches off of the ground. It's going to be buried in, so you won't see the entire structure itself in its height, if you will. The transformer box itself, which is the pad mount, is going to lay right on top of that. It's not going to overextend the limitations of the length and the width, but it is about four and a half to five feet high, because it's a three-phase transformer.
And does it, does it, if the solution using the existing conduit is not feasible, is the location of this pad, what's driving the location of that?
This is just the --
Could it be located somewhere else?
It could be. Ultimately, wherever the engineer, the general contractor decide. My understanding is that the reason the grass belt was proposed is because the left side of the building is going to be renovated. It's going to become like a town park or accessible to the public. So there's a design for, like, new trees, a bench, a new walkway, so they didn't want to add any equipment that's going to take away from the square footage that's going to be on the side of the building.
Right, well, that's being, that's actually being developed right now.
Right, exactly.
Can it go in the back of the building?
It can go in the back of the building, yeah. It can pretty much go wherever you want it to. However, the farther the pad mount is, the longer the run of primary. And it's going to be a lot more money the farther back you push it. So ideally, the closer it is to the pole, the shorter the run of the primary, the lower the bill.
Sure, which I understand. But I was thinking all the same things that Mike was asking you, which is, we're in the midst of putting in a brand-new park, and I'm not sure we want to have a transformer right in front of it.
Right.
So whether it's in the back or not, but somewhere closer to the building or on the side of the building, or, I mean...
And if we're in the process of landscaping, why not landscape around that transformer so that it's hidden for view?
As long as you meet the clearances. So it's five feet behind to the left and to the right, and the front of the transformer, you cannot plant anything in front of, because we're going to have a few bollards in there just in case a car comes over the sidewalk. But around there, as long as you meet the clearance, you can plant.
So I guess my question would be, or my suggestion would be, is can we get with the architect and ask them to pick another, you know, a viable spot for this to go? I mean, I'm thinking just closer to the side of the building or something. I mean, we have, if I'm not mistaken, a fire escape, you know, somewhere on this side or wherever, and just keep it, and it would be closer to the building, actually. I don't know where the feed ultimately terminates in this building. But rather than go all the way through, if it's right next to, I don't know why we're not going closer to the building itself and keeping the aesthetic value of the front of the new park.
You could. With the front of the building, the only problem is that the transformer has to be 10 feet from a drivable surface. So that grass belt, I believe, is further than 10 feet, because we need to be able to reach it with a bucket truck.
Sure, understood.
So the direct front side of the building, if you're facing from the road, the right side, I don't think it's going to work. I think that's more than 10 feet. But if you want to put it in the backside of the right side of the building by the parking lot, you can put it there, because it'll be accessible to us. Or if there's a spot on the left side, I'm not sure how far the property extends past the driveway on the left, but that's another option.
Okay. I don't want to derail the process. I mean, I guess my first question would be if what Ed said, as far as the conduits exist and they're reusable, maybe that's an option. And then, if not, then an option to ask the architect, you know, working with Eversource, if there's another location closer to the building or less out of view from the new park and the newly refurbished front of the building. That's my only concern. I mean, I know, I know you got to do what you have to do, but if we can make it, you know, more pleasing on the eye.
How many amps are going to be coming into this?
I believe it's a 600 amp service, if memory serves me correctly.
Okay, and three transformers on the pole won't do it?
No, the highest amperage we offer overheads on the ground is 320 amps.
Because I know mine is 800, my commercial building, and this lot's shorter run than that.
For the primary?
For the primary coming in, yeah.
Yeah. Could be.
That's why I'm asking.
It's an overhead?
It's underground.
Underground, right? Yeah.
So do you want to come back to us?
Sure.
And so we won't make a decision tonight on this until you have a chance to review this a little bit further?
If this was overhead and they use the same transformers, okay, the three transformers, just boost them up probably on the pole. Then they wouldn't need the transformer box and be able to run the lines right through, right?
Right, if the service does not exceed 320 amp service, sorry, 320 amps, we can keep it overheads on the ground. But if it's going to exceed that, it has to go on the ground. Now, we can move it pretty much anywhere the town decides as long as we get the 10 feet from a drivable surface and the clearances for safety. So as long as someone is willing to meet with me on site, we can agree on a new location. However, just keep in mind, of course, that the farther that transformer is from the pole, the higher the bill is going to be, because the run of primary is going to be farther.
Do you have an approximate price, like, perennial foot to run that? You know, if we move it 30 feet?
Not off the top of my head, because the rates just changed is the problem in January. So I don't know the new rates by heart, but I can get an estimate once we decide how far back we're going to go or if we're going to stay in the front.
Thank you.
If the transformer works on the pole, then you don't have, excuse me, then you don't have to put a transformer box in there, then it wouldn't cost you $7,000 or whatever it is, because you know, it'd be on the pole. So you wouldn't need the extra box if that's allowable.
And that would depend ultimately on how much energy the town is looking to consume in the building with the new changes, because you also don't want to set up an overhead service that's going to be insufficient, and then the transformers are going to fail.
Wouldn't, excuse me for interrupting, but wouldn't Eversource want to be working with our architect to determine what that energy demand was going to be before we specked out the transformer?
We did. The request that I received came with the amperage that was in mind to be used for the town. So that's how the transformer was sized. That's how we came to the conclusion that the pad mount is going to be needed. But if there's any changes, the changes would have to come on behalf of the town, or whoever the engineers or the electrician involved. We cannot determine on your behalf what type of service you need or tell you what's better suited. You pretty much tell us what you need, and we'll work with you.
Okay, I'm going to move to close the hearing, and I don't believe we have a decision made yet, right? So.
Sure, that's okay.
I guess under this hearing, we can extend it to another date, or?
Yes.
Or do we need a motion table?
Well, actually, will the utility company notify the town again?
I have Marie Babbitt, the engineer, as a contact. I don't have anyone from the town, but I can leave you my business card. And if there's someone here that can meet myself and Marie on site, I'll schedule a site visit, and then we can go over the new location or any changes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me just give you my contact information. I do work in and out of the office, so if you call me and I'm not available, you can leave me a voicemail or send me an email, and I'll get back to you as soon as I am back in the office, in case you have any questions. I'm going to give them the contact.
She has hundreds of them.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anytime, you're welcome. Thanks to all of you.
To Carla.
I will let Marie know that this is going to move forward, but whoever wants to contact me from the town is scheduled to inform me. That would be great, okay?
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been going out of order, so I'm going to go to approval of minutes.
You also have, if, when the board wishes to return to reorganizing, board reorganizing, there is a sheet in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 21st as submitted.
I have a second.
So we're going to the minutes next, then, and not the reorganization? I did have one question. Yes, it was on March 21st minutes, unless I missed it. I didn't see in there. This meeting was at, held at the training room over at the Public Safety Building. And there had been a request by Mr. Jaworski. He asked for the record. He was concerned about the custodial agreement. And he says, "For the record, he'd like to have it mentioned regarding the cost." He felt it was the lowest bid, and I didn't see it in there. And he asked that it be put on the record, and I didn't see it there. I was going back to my notes from that day. What page are you on, Cindy? It doesn't matter, the page is not in there, is what I'm saying. Yeah. And I had it in my notes that he had asked for that to be put on the record, so I just wanted to note that those are missing. That was missing. But that was taken up the cleaning services contract? That was after that. We didn't talk about it that day. But he had asked for, on the record, that he wanted his opinion stated. And I didn't see it in here. So I don't know if he wants to review that or whatever. Because I had it in my notes that he had asked for it to be put in.
Oh, okay. At some particular time, though, it turned the meeting? I'm just trying to --
It was in the beginning.
Understood.
Okay, well. And other than that, I don't have any questions. Do you recall, Ed?
I have to go back on the, there was some discussion of something like that, yes.
Okay.
I have to think about it, okay.
Well, we can fall back to the video if it was videotaped.
Yeah, the video is --
So you want to table these?
Sounds like that's what you'd like to do. I'm good with it. Unless you just want to check on that item later, we can accept everything else.
Once we accept them, though, you know what I mean? They can't be amended, Cindy, so.
Right, right. But he could add it on another meeting.
Oh, I --
You know what I mean, if he chooses to.
I see what you're saying.
That's up to him, not me. I just noted it wasn't there for my notes.
Take them individually, April 17th. Anybody have an issue with April 17th?
No.
Well, excuse me. So I made a motion about March 21st. So are we tabling it, or that's the one that there's a question on? Or are we just going to move forward and then add that comment to a future meeting if that's ultimately what happens? That's all. I can either withdraw my motion, and we can table it, or we can vote on it.
Okay, we can table it for, not until we find out.
Table it?
I would recommend tabling the minutes.
Okay.
All right. So I'll make a motion to table the minutes of March 21st. So I'll make a motion to table the minutes of March 21st.
Okay, a second.
All right, great.
Which one you got there?
I've got April 17th next.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April 17th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 8th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Marlene, you mentioned going back to the reorg?
If, if you wish to, or if you wish to take it up later in the meeting. That, that was just part of the, the rep, you know, appointments to capital improvement planning, Franklin Regional Transit Authority, Pioneer Valley, and then the liaisons. That's all taken up as part of the reorganization.
Okay, I mean, I, I have no problem if Cindy and Brian let you know what they're interested in and then we could have a future discussion on it. I mean, that might be more fair to give everybody a chance to, to submit what they're interested in and then we could make the appointment at the next meeting.
Okay. Good to me.
Okay, our next topic three then, right?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to topic three.
Back in order, Ed.
Fire chief discussion and review of EMD position. And Chief Gahn is here, so do you want to make a statement or?
I, I think that, I was asked by, by, over time, by two different select boards to, to review things. I've offered a number of options. I've offered a number of options to the town.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read you what I, I have submitted from you, unless you want to read, okay.
Chairman, I'm, I have to legally excuse myself.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I want you to excuse yourself.
If you wanted, I can summarize that, if you want.
Okay, what I have in front of me is FY19 Fire Ambulance Emergency Management Budget was developed late last calendar year and submitted in December. With the most recent budget presentation expressed and currently strongly believe that we need to make some personal adjustments in order to be more efficient. At that time, I also noted that we need to continue to analyze operations as our goals can be accomplished in many different ways. Since the presentation of my budget, I've received feedback indicating that an alternate plan for emergency management was preferred by some. With that, I have developed and offered the following adjusted proposal. Your proposal is emergency management become its own department, number one. Emergency management answers directly to the Board of Selectmen, number two. $5,940 be moved from fire department salaries to a new emergency management salaries line. Number four, the $4,955.40 emergency management expense line be placed under the control of the emergency management manager. And number five would be the emergency manage, management office be located out of the fire chief's office to the town hall where it would be more accessible to town administration. And these figures reflect a 1% budget deduction based upon FY18 figures. And I, I do also have in my packet from the emergency, Hatfield Emergency Management, the Emergency Management Planning Committee discussed and voted to draft the following, that the Hatfield Emergency Management Director be an autonomous position answering to the Board of Selectmen and have a budget controlled by the department head and not under the auspices of the fire department. The E M P C also recommends with the approval of the select board that the emergency management department be funded as follow. There, there's $5,006 for expenses currently appropriated, $6,000 for salaries to be taken from fire department salaries, for a total of $11,006 salaries and expenses, just a little bit different than your proposal. And from the emergency management team, this configuration costs the town no additional funds than is already, or has historically been appropriated. And, I mean, it, it is the belief of the emergency management that this separate autonomous position and department would better serve the town as it pertains to emergency management function. Okay, the resolution was made possible by the generosity of Fire Chief Gahn and Emergency Management Director Cindy Doherty to take steps to better serve the town of Hatfield. We can consequently are in agreement and in hope that this matter can be placed. So right now, in front of the board, we have your recommendation and we have the emergency management. That's also supporting part of your recommendation, but I believe Ed wants, from emergency management, you wanna, you want to make a comment on this.
Yes, I'd like to comment on that. It was noted on, on 319 and Stephen agreed to it, and that's why this letter was written. Because we know that he submitted, what he submitted to you guys prior. And when we discussed it, it was all agreed, including him, that we go with this second one from the committee. That's what I'd like to see move forward. The other thing I'd like to comment on, one of the things in there, it talked about moving the emergency management to the town hall. That building was approved by town meeting and town meeting approved that as an emergency complex, including police, fire, and emergency management. That's where that facility is, all the radio equipment, everything is moved over there and that's where it should be.
Now, I also, I also have a letter from the Emergency Management Director supporting what you're saying as far as the concern of, the only concern it seems to be from the Emergency Management Director would be moving it from the fire department because the Emergency Management Director, I believe, I didn't have a chance to fully read everything. I just got it, I don't know if you had a letter forwarded, but because of the equipment's there and the antennas there, so. I guess, right now, the only issue that I see with this is whether or not, it's not that the Emergency Management Director shouldn't be moved, the Emergency Management Director shouldn't be separate, Emergency Management Director should be under the select board. The only concern I has is, it seems to be whether or not the Emergency Management Director would be moved out of that building since the building was originally designed for emergency management.
Right, everything is over there and right now, she shares, the position shares the office with Stephen. My recommendation would be to put that office in, this little office, and move the ambulance in with Stephen's side because Stephen's on that, that would be my recommendation.
So could, could we sort of take this in parts?
Yeah, that might work better.
So, first off, it, it seems like the, the intent is to move the Emergency Management Director position to, to report directly to the Board of Selectmen, right? Right? That's, everyone's sort of saying the same thing on that?
That's noted in the, in the filings, yeah.
So, so currently, as it stands, I have a problem with that. And I have a problem with that because one of my colleagues currently holds that position. So unless we do some sort of a vetting process or a process to open this up and have people apply for the position so that we can go through the process and make sure nobody can come back to us and say, you appointed your colleague as the Emergency Management Director. I want no conflict of interest rules, I want no collusion accusations. I want to follow this by the letter of the law. So, having said that, if, if we're gonna move that position, and it's difficult because Cindy holds both. I mean, we're, we're sort of in a tight jam here, to be perfectly honest, I think. We just need to follow all the steps and the processes the right way. And, and just open it up, do, do it for a week, you know, whatever the normal process is, let the applications come in and then, and then make our decision. But at least that way, we can say, we followed the process, no conflict of interest. It wasn't a done deal before it even happened. I, I want nothing to do with that, so.
Has legal been asked that question at all?
Is it legal, what, Ed?
Has legal service been asked what question?
If, if we were to move Cindy under emergency management, there'd be a conflict of interest because she's our.
To reappoint her?
Right, but move her from the fire chief under us, would that be? Are we, like Brian's suggesting, just redo the position to ensure that there's no conflict of interest?
I see what you're saying, no, that has not been reviewed with legal counsel.
She can hold that position as long as she does not take the salary for that position and the Board of Selectmen's salary.
Well, if, I'll tell you what, we don't even have to have a conversation or post it. If, if Cindy is willing to not be compensated for the Emergency Management Director position, I'll make that motion tonight to appoint her to that.
She can take either one, she, she has the option.
But she's not taking it if I'm making the, my, my, the reason I'm saying it is, I'm not appointing someone where they can get compensated for it without going through a process of hiring somebody. I, I understand legally how, you, you get a choice because you're, you're getting compensated by two, I understand that, but.
But she's already being compensated for it correctly, correct?
Under the fire chief who signs off on the payroll. Now she'd be signed off by the Board of Selectmen who are her colleagues. The whole thing is just a mess and, and we'll get through it, but we've got to be very careful. Yes, she is, but we didn't appoint her, we appointed her to that position but under a different department head, Mike. That, that's my concern is making an appointment directly reporting to us.
It's the same position. What you're doing is you're reorganizing the reporting structure. So, I mean, you're not changing the position.
Well, we are, and, and I think that's if I, if I may.
Yes.
If I may, there's, there's, there's a lot of parts to this. So, so this goes back to, yeah, that I was tasked by two select boards to look into the, the overall function. I did survey a number of communities, spoke to emergency managers and chiefs and things. And, and I came back with this proposal, which talked about financially some better steps, I thought, for the town. And you know what, I took more abuse from select individuals in community than I really wanted to have. And, and therefore, we, we looked back at it and we looked at other options. And you know what, I'm not losing sleep either way, whichever way this goes. I'm not gonna lose any more sleep over this. But I will tell you this, we, we should look at this, you know? I hear from, from Ed and others that this is a, this needs more time, right? This is more time, it needs more space. Okay, but then I hear other people say different things. I think, you know, I, I pulled the job description out today to really, really look at it, sit back and look at it and say, well, what? I think that we need to look at the position as a whole. I, I, I think that, you know, take it, take the budget, take it out, take it out of my office, that's fine. It, it's gonna make things better on my, on, on, from the fire department point of view. But maybe this is a 10-hour-a-week job. I, I have, you know, and, but we've limited it to four, but, but maybe it's a 10, an average of four. Maybe it's a 10-hour-a-week job. Maybe there should be, this says there should be general reports, weekly reports, I would have think to the select board. Is that something you want to see? I don't know if we're crunched for time here. I, I, I think that, that we have, we have resources. And, and I mean not resources here, we have resources outside this town that we should at this point be looking at. Why don't we take a study of this job? Maybe it's, maybe it should be more hours, maybe it should have other parts to it. Maybe we're not doing it justice today, I, I don't know. And you know, I, I'm not the one to decide that, I, I've offered a number of options to this town. And it, it's, it's up to, to, to the town to, to vet this. We can get legal opinions on this, this should not be hard, we, we pay town council a lot of money. You know, we can talk to MEMA, they're willing to work with us to resolve this. You know, we can talk to other EMDs in other communities. We can say, how much hours you put in? We have years' worth of data here, why don't we look at this? And maybe we can say, maybe this is what we want to do with this. I, I think it allows you to, this is really an opportunity to, to better shape this position, too.
I agree.
And, and, and I'm not talking about under me, I'm talking better shape this position for the community.
But the issue, the issue at this point, that's a whole other issue.
Right.
That's not what's on the agenda tonight.
It is, though.
It might be at some future point, maybe as you go into next year's budgeting cycle or whatever. But, I mean, what's on the agenda or is on being requested is, is a reorganization of the EMDs.
And to look at the job.
Relationship.
And to look at the job.
And right now.
This term expires on June 30th.
And, and.
So this is the opportunity to move forward and see exactly how the town wants to move. I mean, I brought the selectman book and it sounds like the majority of towns, it's either the fire chief or the police chiefs, the emergency management director, right? Well, right?
Yeah, and as towns, we surveyed a greater percentage.
I'm, I'm just.
I know, but.
This is why we've got to go through.
In these letters that were provided to you guys tonight, there's nothing in any one of those letters that I heard that says we should look at this position and see what, look at the nature and scope of the position, look at the need of, of the position, look at the pay rate for the position, none of that was in this.
Mike, they're bringing, they want us to be the ones that are in charge of the position, that's why I'm bringing it up.
No, I mean, all, what I heard is all, all Steve's letter said and, and what Cindy's letter was saying was.
And we would do no different if it was under any other board or any other thing that was coming before the Board of Selectmen to oversee on a go-forward basis. We want to, I want to know what the process is and is there a job description? Which I hadn't even, thank goodness there is one, so we can review it and make sure we're, I'll follow in the proper procedures. I mean, that's nothing new, that's already exists.
The first question you're, what, what Brian's saying is, the first question on item one is we as a board have a colleague, are we allowed to say that colleague now works for us? Or is that a conflict of interest? That's the first question. It's not a question about any of the other stuff.
About the individual, it's about the position.
The position did report to the Board of Selectmen several years ago and the Board of Selectmen made the decision to move it to the fire department, the fire chief.
Right, the Board of Selectmen, it did report to the Board of Selectmen previously.
It did.
But now we have a situation where we as a board have a colleague. Would we, would we be in conflict by saying, okay, whether any one of us now, you work for us? You know what I'm saying? I, I guess that's the first question. And I, I wish I, if I knew this question was up, we would have had a chance to check what legal, right?
I don't think that, personally, I don't think that if, if the position is filled following the way we post positions and it ends up that our colleague is the Emergency Management Director, then I think we've done our due diligence, we've avoided any sort of conflict of interest. And then at that point, it's less of an issue. My, my issue is getting to that appointment right now. I do agree, you know, if we want to take care of our salary and not have to oversee weekly timesheets wherever, maybe we make it a stipend position, flat, a flat rate for the whole year. I mean, you know, there's options.
What you guys are missing here is, one, we've been around for the last 30 years, 40 years, okay? We've been a team for that long and most of us have been there for that many years, okay? Two, we chose the position, okay? The, the committee chose the position, the 13-member committee chose the person that we felt was gonna do the best job for that position. And at that time, it was Cindy, okay? So it's very important that they have the criteria, they have the, the credentials, they have.
Of course.
The training, they have everything. I mean, I don't even qualify with what she does, okay? I'm probably three-quarters there or.
Ed, I'm not denying any of that, we're not looking to.
What I'm saying is, when you put this thing out for bid or whatever you're gonna think about doing, I think you want to think about the best interests of the town here.
Absolutely.
We've been recognized worldwide, I mean, the country, the whole country.
I don't think anybody's disputing that, Ed. I think anybody, the, the first question is, is conflict of interest since we're the appointing authority.
Right.
That's the first issue.
And, and that's all you have to do is.
I sort of like this, I like all the recommendations. I, I say, this is, this sounds great. I'm sort of in favor of it, but I am concerned now that Brian brought up the conflict, which I think we need to find out about.
Sure.
So that we're not in conflict because, you know, a lot of things, we're trying to be open and make sure we're doing it the right way.
If you looked at the conflict of interest laws, you would see in there, but to be certain that they haven't changed, if I were you, I'd have Marlene call the Ethics Commission or Cindy or whoever and ask directly if that position hampers any portion of that. Because she can become, or he can become a special employee.
Well, I think that's, that's.
Or whatever the case would be that, that allows for that position. But I do know when you're elected, you can only have one, one salary. It's either that one or the selectman's salary.
Right.
But if you hold two elected positions, you can have two elected salaries and, you know, that's the way it works, so.
I mean, we can put this on hold until we find out, right? I mean.
I, I just want to, if I could, I just want to be clear. So, Ed, I, I totally agree with you. This whole, my, my comments are meant to do everything in the best interest of the town of Hatfield and in the best interest of Brian and Ed. So I think it's very simple, we received two letters, identical for the most part, from the chief of police and the fire chief that say the same thing. And to me, they're, you know, they're the officials that. And to me, they're, you know, they're the officials that, you know, doing the day-to-day stuff. I see this as an opportunity, however, to make sure that we have the job description, that we post the position, so that we are not held in any sort of even perceived conflict of interest. I mean, I have no problem with the person who holds it now, I truly don't. But I do have a problem with making an appointment without some sort of procedure in getting there.
What a... You have a problem with that, but if she's been sitting in that position for the last seven years, six years, okay? And there is no conflict of interest, as you guys are talking, why wouldn't you just keep her in that position because she's doing an excellent job?
Well, let's find out if there's a conflict of interest.
Okay? And I just want to comment one more thing. When you have that little report in front of you that says other towns have the Chile Police Chief or the Fire Chief or whatever, these other towns, you want to check and see if they have a 13-member board, and 11 out of 13 members or 10 show up at every meeting.
This isn't about the board.
And discuss that. Okay, the committee, I'm sorry, it's a committee. They do not have that. So, in order, even Hadley, they don't have a committee there. So, they have the Fire Chief in charge of that, okay? They do not participate like we all do, okay? That's why we're recognized where we are from the state.
Good, appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, first, we have to find out about this... Marlene, it wasn't that this is a conflict.
The question, yes, whether the Board of Selectmen can...
For us, to appoint our colleague under us. I mean, that's the first question. And then, then we'll go from there, I guess. So, I guess we'll just...
Well, so, so whether it is or it isn't, I'd still like to see us post the position with the job description and just see who applies for it. Because then we know there's no conflict of interest because we followed, you know, a different process, a different procedure.
Okay, there's a couple other items here that we may consider then. I mean, if you want to... Department's salary line, do we want to even take that up? These other... There's some other recommendations that were moved in here?
Well, I mean, they're roughly the same, the salary is $6,000. But I think we, what we... I think what we were going to do is see if there was...
$6,000 is in the Fire Department's salary budget right now.
It's the... No, it's the... The figures are based on your reduction you asked for. The first letter was written before the Select Board and Finance asked for a reduction. The second figure reflects the reduction that every town, department, this town suffered, sort of the DPW, which suffered a larger reduction. That's all it reflects.
So, the amounts are the same? Minus 1%, basically?
Yeah, it's 1%, very simple. It just reflects the common, or the current values.
Yeah.
The other issue with finances, and you might want to put that off as well, is that the budgets are all set, they were voted.
You can't change them.
Two weeks ago, you can't change... You can't establish new line items at this point. You can certainly manage the position differently, but in terms of accounting...
Any adjustments would require town meeting authorization.
Right, all the accounting is still going to be, you know, if there's a salary for the position.
Puts in the budget.
It's now reporting to the Board of Selectmen, that would still be booked to the Fire Department.
The only thing that we can do is, at the next special town meeting, change that from...
Slide it over, put the amounts...
Right now, you can't.
That's right. I'd just like to just add one thing, that space is an issue here in Town Hall. There's a lack of it. Currently, the office, which I refer to as the multi-use room, boards and committees will use that in the evenings, but the Veteran Service Agent uses that, that office. And while the building renovations are going on...
There'd be even less space.
The Building Inspector will use that during the day or early morning. He comes in in the early morning and works Wednesday evenings. So, he would have to use that space. Well, he wouldn't have to, that's... Just looking at the plans, that's the available space that he could use.
Okay, so, basically, as far as any of the recommendations, we have to wait until we get some more information, especially on the conflict. And then we decide whether or not it should be re-advertised. And then if it's re-advertised, we're going to make sure that all the descriptions of what is required are in there, so we get a qualified...
I encourage you to look at the hours and things. You know, there's... We clearly have a difference in opinion on hours. And that's been, that's been in existence for almost two years now. And so, that's something to look at. You know, maybe, maybe it deserves more, which then affects some of the budget funds. But, but really, like, this is an opportunity to look at this and...
Okay, the thing that we require the most is attend the meetings from FEMA, okay? Make sure that the budgets are in, make sure the grants are in, go after the grants, follow up, make sure that they're in on time, so we don't lose any money like we did a couple of years ago, okay? Those are important things.
Or maybe the EMD...
And when some, some one of our peers or Selectmen said, don't pay any more money to the person or the job, and we lose a grant, that upsets me. And that should upset everybody in town, because we had a chance to get quite a bit of money. I think it was $11,000 at that time, and it didn't happen.
And I think, Ed, we do, we do agree with all that. The first thing we have to do is this conflict thing. We've got to find out that if we're legally allowed to do this, okay?
And if you do put it out for bid, I'd like our committee to approve or recommend to the Board of Selectmen.
You can make recommendations, absolutely.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
But we'd like to review the application and be the steering committee.
If we were to hire a B, having them, I would say we would have the Emergency Management Team somehow involved with this, maybe.
And I don't have a problem with that either, but there's 13, so we'd have to figure...
I'm happy to serve and also happy not to serve.
Gotcha.
And that committee might very well review the existing position description.
Well, I agree, Mike, with what Ed was just saying that we... Because I don't know what's in there, because I don't have a copy of it, but whatever, that should be in there, right? The job specification should be in the job descriptions. And then, you know what it does, Ed? It cleans up the job description, and it makes sure that whoever's in that position, this is the expectation, and that's because that's what we need to know. Because the person's going to report to us, right? So, we've got to be, like all the department heads do, able to sit down and go through it and say, you hit it, you hit it, you hit it, you need improvement here, you hit it, you know, whatever.
And what you have to realize, if there is an incident that happens in town, then that $6,000 for salaries is going to go up by a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, we got all that, whatever.
And that has to happen, okay? Because you're going to have forms, you're going to have all kinds of stuff going on.
We got it, yeah.
All right, so...
Even states that in here.
The basic, the basic stuff, the $6,000 will cover the basic.
Okay, so, Marlene, you can probably have that for our next meeting, get that information, so then we can bring it up again for discussion, I guess.
Stephen, could you get a copy of that? If Marlene doesn't have one, could you get a copy too? Good place to start.
I was going to say, you might want to extend the position for another month, 30 days or something like that, so we don't...
If we get to the end, we'll do that.
Yeah.
We have another copy.
Good until June 30th.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want to leave a empty position there.
Right.
Totally agree.
So, we'll include on the agenda for next one, the issue, and also extending that position if need be for another month or two or whatever, okay? And that should take care of that for now. All right. Any more discussion on this?
I'm good, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. We've got to let Cindy in before we go any further.
Is that something you put together?
No, I pulled out of the file in my office.
Okay, because I do have a book of job descriptions.
Thank you.
It also might not be...
Okay.
How was your break?
Thank you. I'm sorry?
Oh, it's still on TV.
Okay, we're all back together again. I have a letter of resignation from the Police Department.
Yep, I will move to accept the resignation from Officer Timothy Boyle, who has taken a new position in a different capacity.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
All I would... So, I would imagine that Chief DeKoschak will, you know, maybe bring forth another candidate, because it looks like there was still a term until 2019.
Yes, I would say, send them a letter of thank you and say thank you for your new job. Looks like you got a nice job.
Yep.
Yeah, I sent that today along, everyone's thanks.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so the motion carries. Okay, we have an application for a one-day permit for Pioneer Valley Indoor Carding, and it's a function to, for beer tasting, for charity fundraiser for Big Brothers and Sisters. And I believe the application is in order. The correct application is in order.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on the hours.
It'll start at 6:00 PM and at 9:00 PM.
May I ask a question? So, I'm just not sure, it looks like you're expecting maybe under 100 guests. So, I don't know what, honestly, what the rules are for police coverage. If a certain number of guests make it mandatory or...
I met with Chief DeKoschak last week. And actually got him to sign off on the application.
I see he initialed it.
Oh, fine, okay, right, thank you.
Yeah, we were concerned about that, too.
Excellent, good. Sounds like a fun night.
Yeah. Make it down, it's for a good cause. It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be good.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the...
Have a second?
License for, for the Pioneer Valley Indoor Carding.
So, I think the license that's granted should have the hours printed on the license.
Okay, between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00? 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM?
Yeah, we'll be getting there to set up around 5:00 PM.
From 5:00 PM till 10:00 PM?
Perfect, yeah.
Right, is that okay? I mean, just a little room on either end, just to...
We have about 20 to 25 brewers and cider makers from the valley coming in to set up.
Awesome, yeah, okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Certainly, I'll make a motion to approve the temporary liquor license for the 18th of June, $1,800 to $2,100, time on both ends, for Pioneer Valley Carding.
So, I think we're going to go five... Got to do it in year...
From 5:00 to 9:00?
17, 1700.
Oh, I'm sorry, with the extra time on both ends, is it, yeah? Because we talked about... Right, I think there was a motion that was already made, and then you made another motion.
Go from 5:00 to 10:00.
Oh, 5:00 to 10:00, okay.
1700 to... What is that, Cindy? 2,000, 20?
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have fun.
Good luck.
It's good they showed up.
Topic number six, financial report update, Town Administrator's Report.
I received an update from Justin Cole on Friday. Schedule A is substantially complete. He's working on the balance sheet and draft, you know, balance sheet as the final balance. There were some funds that his staff was going to be looking at over the weekend. There was approximately 19 funds that they wanted to check the numbers against, on the balance sheet. I expected to get a report today. I reached out to Justin earlier. I haven't received a response from him to date. We're still planning on the auditors being here next Monday on June 4th. And I would expect that Schedule A will be submitted, but I'll wait for Justin to tell me that. But I would expect that it would be submitted this week.
And we're still on target for the crew coming in next week?
The auditors, next Monday on the 4th, they will be here. So, when I, when I talked with the auditor about a week and a half ago, he had indicated that, you know, provided everything is in place, available for them, that he could have a draft report on Monday, June 11th. So, that being said, DOR would need, you know, a couple of days, I would think, that they would be able to tell us if they will go ahead and certify free cash.
Okay, originally, we were talking about a town meeting, a special town meeting, depending if we were going to get the free cash.
Correct.
We need 14 days.
Based on... Right, if we're to have a town meeting, I would recommend a special town meeting the very last week of June, Wednesday or Thursday or a Saturday morning. The warrant would have to be posted, I believe I had calculated, by the 13th of June. I would recommend the Selectmen and Finance Committee meet next week to, you know, I can have a draft warrant in place. I have provided you with a list of items that we need to fund. It's somewhat a priority list. But again, I just, I put that together for discussion purposes. So, does the Selectmen and Finance Committee have a meeting next week and are able to come to terms with what articles you would like to add on the, add to the warrant?
So, next week...
The warrant would have to be signed the following week.
We're... But our, is next week, we're going to be sure that we're going to hit the target of June 11th on the draft to, you know what I'm saying?
Right. The auditor said that if they're here through Thursday and they work in their office on Friday and over the weekend, and putting the draft together, they could have it ready on Monday, the 11th, to send to DOR.
I was just going to say, perhaps we can meet with the Finance Committee on June 12th. Tuesday, June... I mean, Tuesdays have always, I don't know what Cindy's schedule is, but in the past, the Tuesdays always seem to be good days for, for most of the Finance and most of the Select Board members. And we'll, and at that point, we'll also know where we stand in the draft of that, of that report to, to the state, so... Whether we have the draft or the amount of free cash that will ultimately be released in time for a June town meeting, we could take this list that you've provided, thank you, by the way, and, and you work with the Finance Committee to, you know, make adds, deletions, whatever. Our hands are still somewhat tied, because we don't know what that amount is, right? So, I mean, some of these things are definitely have to do's.
Right. And if you were, say you were to put forward, you know, an article for, for every item listed here, and free cash, you know, there isn't, you know, either, if there's not enough free cash to cover all these articles, then you'd make a decision which articles you would table and put them off to another, a future town meeting, and just take up what you feel you need to address. If everything does fall into place, did you have a date that you were looking at for the special town meeting? For the special town meeting? I would say that last week of June, you know, Wednesday, Thursday. It would be hard to get people on a Friday night. So, either Wednesday or Thursday evening, or if you want to do it Saturday morning.
What would be the date on that?
26th and 27th is Tuesday, Wednesday, the last week of June.
26th or 27th.
Yeah, the 26th is Tuesday, 27th is Wednesday.
We said Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday. Okay, 28th would be Thursday.
27th or 28th.
27th, 28th, or...
Or the 30th.
Or the 30th.
If you did it on Saturday.
The 30th is the Friday.
Oh, the 30th is, 27th is Wednesday, Thursday's the 28th. Friday's June 29th. Right, so Saturday would be the 30th. So, either the 27th, 28th, or 30th.
Ed, do you have a comment? Marlene, you have that are the important ones?
Do you like me to speak to it? We do have a number of fiscal year 18 budget deficits that I'm not certain that will be, the Finance Committee and Selectmen will be able to take those up at the end of the year. Between now and July 15th, they have the ability to transfer money from other accounts. Right. So, we're looking at a health insurance deficit of $20,000. Smith-Vogue Tuition Transportation has a $30,586 deficit. We'd like to cover professional services at Space State Municipal Accounting Group for $30,000. For fiscal year 19, we have an obligation to have an OPEB actuarial study done. And if we don't do that in 19, you know, there could be consequences for that. That's roughly, for that study, $3,510. To reinstate funds, which would be the 1% reduction that all departments took and the 2% that the DPW took from their budget. I have not put that figure in there yet. Ambulance surplus should have $40,000 coming back to them. Community preservation's looking to be reimbursed for $46,000. And stables, two stabilization accounts. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee had said they wanna make an effort to reimburse that. So, they may do that gradually. So, I just put out there, you know, $100,000 between the two stabilization funds to reimburse those.
I'd like to request the $25,000 dollars be put on there and continuously for the 350th. Add to the list. And if there is no money, then we'll just have to wait to the next.
So, that was, you had an article, right, you, the committee was funded $100 at the annual town meeting.
Right. Some of these articles, if you remember, we actually spoke about it at the annual town meeting, knowing that they were there, some of those reimbursements in your, in the... Yeah, yeah. And that committee was one of them. Right.
The $24,900, okay, for that committee. And I'd like to see that article be put on there.
We'll discuss it with Finance that. I guess all I wanted to say was along with yours, the other things Marlene alluded to were things that were articles, because we didn't know at the time.
If something fails, then there's gonna be money available, and I'd like to see it go to that.
As far as the schedule is concerned on fiscal '17?
Schedule A?
No.
Oh, oh, the schedule, the overall schedule closing out fiscal year '17? Okay.
Justin's working on Schedule A.
Yes.
Which presumes that the general ledger for fiscal '17 will reflect little or no variances, including the accounts receivable.
And that's what he's looking at?
Account, which has had unbelievably significant variances, so much so that the auditors last year wouldn't qualify the audit. And even John Sullivan had major issues about the RAR account. But I guess my point here is, would it make sense for, and when did you say the auditors were scheduled to commit?
They're scheduled to be here Monday, June 4th.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
It's next Monday. Are you meeting, I mean, it would seem to me that you would want to meet with Justin to ask him about, you know, is this general ledger, does it have integrity at this point? He's working on the Schedule A, and you just said he's working on Schedule A's balance sheet numbers.
That's substantially complete. He's working on the draft balance sheet.
Right, the draft balance sheet. But there's also, there are also a whole bunch of other accounts in the general ledger, including expense accounts.
Oh, right. He's aware. Oh, yeah.
Which have got to jive. And I'm just wondering whether it makes sense to meet with him, to hear where he is at, and to make sure that he's prepared for the auditors to come in here.
Well, he knows. We've kept, we're all in the loop together.
We get daily updates, Mike.
We're all in the loop together. Justin is very much aware of the auditors coming in here next week.
All right. And he feels confident that the auditors, when they open fiscal '17 and start to review it, that they're gonna provide an unqualified opinion.
Well, I'm not going to speak for Justin, but as of last Friday...
Well, he's a, I mean, he should, he should have, I mean, he should be able to, one way or the other, feel, you know, what's his, what's his level of confidence in these books at this point? Is it 80%? Is it 90%? Is it 95%? You know, such that when the auditors come in, they're gonna be able to go through this in a week. They're gonna provide an unqualified opinion to us and to the DOR, and everything's gonna run smoothly. And that's what's gonna have to happen in order to have a town meeting, a special town meeting at the end of June.
And Mike, there may be variances, and we'll have to provide an explanation to DOR. In order to meet this timeline, though, they may not have the time that it would take to, you know, look at those variances, and they would have to do that at a later time.
Plus, I, you gotta remember too, we've been having DOR come in, assist us. DOR's been in contact with Justin. Justin's been in contact with the Finance, and handling. Everybody's been on the same page here. So, that's why we're hoping with confidence that the auditors come in and can do their thing, and we can get free cash.
I mean, I hope you understand the skepticism here, because...
And I understand. I understand, yeah.
Fiscal '17 was just, was laden with, with, I don't know how to position this, but numbers that were put into accounts without absolutely any source documents whatsoever to make schedules balanced. And, you know, I'm assuming that all of this has been reviewed, that the appropriate accounting entries and adjusting entries have been made, and that fiscal '17 will have integrity as of, you know, June 4th.
And the next step for Justin is to also get us in line with municipal accounting as done in the state. So, that's another, another part of his charge. It's just...
Sure.
So, I mean, I feel you're, you're paying the way I feel.
I understand where we're at as a community, and I think the other issue here is fiscal '18.
Right.
And where do we stand with fiscal '18? And, you know, what's been reconciled at this point, if any months have been reconciled? And where do we stand with that? And what's the schedule there to play catch-up?
Right.
In '18 as well as to continue to book appropriately '19? So, that's what I was talking about in terms of, you know, at some point, you guys should present some sort of a schedule, a timeframe for all of this to the community.
Yeah, I mean, there's no question that it has been challenging for the Treasurer Collector's Office and Accountant's Office as a result of things that were not reported or booked. And they have been putting in a lot of time catching up and correcting things.
And I think they've been doing an outstanding job trying to...
We'll find out in the next four weeks.
Yes, we will. Okay. Okay, Town Administrator's Report. We got topic seven, right?
Topic seven, Community Preservation Letters of Agreement. These are community preservation projects that were authorized at annual town meeting this year. And the, I don't know if everybody has some in the same order, but there are three of them. The invasive species control, the community gardens, and the Smith Academy Athletic Field. This requires the Board of Selectmen to vote the letter of agreement and sign them.
Make a motion to accept the three letters of agreement as proposed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. No discussion, right? We've had discussion. Okay. Yes. All right. Topic eight, under Town Administrator's Report, Wax Road.
This is a conservation restriction, and this is as a result of White Rock Trail. Again, this was a prior town meeting authorization and requires the Board of Selectmen to vote to approve the conservation restrictions, sign it, and the Conservation Commission will also have to sign this.
Have a motion?
Yep, make a motion to accept the conservation restriction as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? All opposed? Topic nine, Marlene?
Hampshire Council of Governments fiscal year 19 budget update. The Executive Committee was scheduled to meet last week on May 24th, and I was going to update the board on the approved budget. However, I have not been notified, and I went on their website and didn't receive anything. I also wanted to just open it up, you know, for discussion with the board. I've provided you with copies of the letter the Hampshire Council of Governments has sent out to all communities. And also, what I received just last week from area legislators, senators, they're all senators, in response to the Hampshire Council of Governments' letter that states that municipalities need to be held responsible for their deficit. So, I just...
Really?
For, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question for that. Is Hampshire Council of Government, is this where we use their bidding procedures and all that stuff?
We use several services. Yes, they do, they procure services. DPW utilizes some of those bids.
I do know, Brian, you just said it before on the emergency management, about looking into this and putting it out to see if we can get a better price on a lot of things. Gas prices were sky high through the Council of Government. We're paying astronomical prices, and there's a lot cheaper prices we could have gotten. So, my question is, are we really getting our money's worth with Hampshire County Council Governments? And back when I was a Selectman, we did. But we also found that when we put things out for bid, they were a lot less than the Hampshire Council of Government. So, maybe you wanna reconsider, especially like paving and asphalt and so on, and maybe just have the DPW Director put those out the bid to see what we can get for prices and see if we can do a lot better than Hampshire Council Government.
Well, I think the number of participants also drives the rates. And I was curious and asked Hampshire Council of Governments the number of municipalities or participants in the IT program. And there are only five other towns. And the numbers have been decreasing. Most of this came up last year. And that's when I proposed, I wanted to put it on that we vote, maybe to get out of it, leave it up to the people in the town.
We are not getting our money's worth, let's put it that way.
Because we discussed the IT, we discussed the salt, we discussed the gas prices all last year. And this letter from the General Court of Massachusetts, they had issued a statement, there was a statement last year in the newspaper that they were concerned about the sustainability of the HCOG. And this past year, this town gave them $10,000 towards their building. And one of the, the other things that came up was all the bonuses. Every employee last year, was what I read in print, you know, if the newspaper's correct, received a bonus. The Director received $10,000, and every other employee received others, which is $10,000 we gave them. So, there's been a lot of questions about it. I read through the entire 2016, their annual report, it was not good. When we had them here on the electricity, the proposal, the representative from HCG did say they were $400,000 in debt at that time. And that didn't, that does not count the four-plus million from prior years. So, we've asked, I know there are towns that are all discussing this. Belcher Town did, I believe, vote out of it. They just voted to opt out. Yeah, because I wanted to put it to the town last year. So, you know, the less town is going to increase your assessment, your annual assessment. And there's also, in a lot of those things, and I have copies of the IT bills, there's a built-in middleman fee or so. There's a, I believe it's 6%, right? Yeah, 6% service charge on anything they do. So, even the deal you get is not the actual numbers. Whatever they do, there's another 6% that goes to them for being the middleman.
I don't know what they're doing for a revenue model and potentially, I guess, revising their budget for this coming year, but there was something in the paper this morning saying that they were now gonna offer memberships to all communities for a dollar a year.
Yeah. It's, um...
So, you know, an interesting approach for an organization that's $40,000 in the red at this point, at least in this fiscal year, if that's the case.
But with the General Court, I think, I think we really have to take notice. I mean, we did last year, but I think we really have to take notice with the concerns that the state... And this letter was signed by Stephen Kulik, another state, one, two, Goldman. Represented. All six state representatives, yeah. And they're very wary and concerned.
Just when they spent the $10,000 just to give the Director a bonus, when they're looking for money to repair the courthouse, that was not, not good, not a good situation. I mean, that tells me they don't have a handle on their finances. And that's a red flag that should be waved, and you guys should be questioning all of that stuff.
I don't think the issue's gonna go away with Hampshire Council of Governments, and I think we're probably gonna have to keep staying on top to see where they're at.
Right. Keep tracking their situation.
So, you know, the concept of the Hampshire Council of Governments, like any collaboratives, is buying power. And I think that has, in some instances, served us, the town, well. And in other times, though, when we've signed into a contract, a long-time term contract, which I don't wanna speak for Cindy, but I know that was a concern of hers, and Ed just brought it up, and that was for the gasoline. You know, in the beginning of that, we were saving money.
We were saving.
So, and when you sign a contract, that's not often. That's sometimes what happens. I don't disagree with you guys, though, that on a go-forward basis, and I think Marlene's already looked at doing some different things with IT. You and I spoke last week. You know, to see what we can get on our own that is or isn't just as good or better than what the buying power of the HCOG is. Some of the things that we do benefit from, I will say, though, are some of the projects that we use them for, and I'm sure we pay for it in a sense, or through the contract we sign, but for public works projects. We also use, in many cases, their architectural people, you know, I think even maybe some of their legal people, depending on how the contract's being drawn up for when we're going out. So, there are some, so there are some benefits. I'm not gonna sit here and say they're great with what they're going through right now as an organization, but, you know, we do reap some benefits for not much of a fee yearly. But we also don't wanna pay higher fees.
Correct.
And we could get something less expensive. I mean, I'm totally on board with that. So, you know, we're just gonna have to, as things come in, put them out to bid on our own or whatever, whatever makes sense, or get a commitment from them that, you know, here's the price. I mean, that's what I would suggest we do.
So, I think we are shopping around a little bit now what they have for price and what we can get it for. So, we're starting, trying to have both the best worlds.
We were also supposed to have a grant-writing person in there at one point, and I've never seen anybody write a grant for the town of Hatfield. I might be wrong, but tell me if I'm wrong. I don't believe so. Not that I've seen.
But we also utilize, not just HCOG, is it Franklin Regional?
Pioneer Valley, Pioneer Valley has worked with me.
Sorry.
I've worked on grant applications, and they have worked with us.
But how much?
Part of the technicals.
There's things, right now, I know, well, quite a couple of months ago, quite a few months ago, Trump had stated that he was putting so much money in utilities and underground services and all kinds of stuff like that. I mean, are we on top of that to try to receive some of that money from the federal government? I mean, we should be looking at all that. And I do know that the projects have to be shelf-ready.
Shelf-ready.
Okay, and if they're not, you're not gonna get the grant. So, whatever's on the shelf, and it's all certified and ready to go, we can get the money for it. And unless that's happening, we're not gonna get any money, which is too bad, but...
Yeah, we like free money.
Any more discussion on Hampshire County Governments? Okay, well, move to the next.
I just had a question. You had said they had architectural services.
It's, I might have used...
Because I know the architect for the project here and this project, I've never seen the architect.
I know they've, maybe engineering services is the word I was looking for, not architectural. But I'm pretty sure in some of the contracts I've seen, there's been, for public works projects.
I just think from my experience, you know, the benefits can be good.
Yeah.
As a result of the Council of Government losing clients, essentially, is affecting the municipalities that are still a participant.
Okay.
Because it's, you know, it's buying power, and if you have less...
Correct.
Less users.
Okay, I'm gonna move to topic 10.
Request for a Section 15 license. Hatfield Center Store has requested the Selectmen's support to basically file special legislation to seek an additional all-alcohol package store license. As you know, the town's at its quota. And only by special legislation from the local licensing authority that can be done. Requires town meeting, town meeting action, town meeting vote. So, if the Board of Selectmen should support that, I'll draft some legislation piece, review it with Town Council.
Is anybody here from Hatfield Center Store to speak? I don't, was anybody gonna reply?
No, we didn't. I didn't ask them. Were they going to, okay. No, we didn't. I didn't ask them. Were they going to... Okay.
I did speak with the manager at one point, and part of the reason they were looking to is to put them on equal footing with other stores in town.
Correct. There is another convenience store in town that has an all-alcohol. They just have the beer and wine.
Because we're at quota now, right?
We are. We don't have any all-alcohol package store licenses available.
So this is sort of interesting. How do we determine whether we want special legislation or not? Are we being favorites to one and not somebody else? You know what I'm saying? I don't know. I guess I'll open it up for discussion.
I would just ask, do we know how many full alcohol license we have now? The whole town? We only have two?
You get a report from the ABC every year, how many the town can have.
Yeah, but I didn't know how many we had enough. So it's only two?
And they're both active?
Right.
Cindy, any discussion on this?
Not really. Just, I don't believe, to my knowledge, there's been no problems there in the past with selling underage. One thing they do put on there is that they, I did note that, and this is just my point of view, I don't know if you agree with that, they've always been responsible to ID anyone under 30. A lot of stores have gone to, they ID everyone. You can be, you know, very elderly, and they're going to ID you. And I kind of think that's a better policy, just because, stop to look at somebody and go, oh, you look like you're under 30. Everybody's different, so... That's the only change I'd like to see, is that you ID everyone.
Do the other stores have to ID everyone? Would be my only, you know what I mean?
No, I said I'd like to see that. They're supposed to, with the ABC, they're supposed to.
Well, that's what I mean. I think that's a state thing, isn't it?
But, you know, as long as they don't sell, nobody's going to question that. If they sell to somebody underage.
I don't disagree with it, Cindy. I just wanted to make sure. It sounded like that was going to be just for these guys, and I was just going to say.
No, no, I think it's a great policy, because a lot of them do it, but that's just my opinion.
It's their policy, just to cover themselves, they ask everybody for their ID.
Like Big Y does.
But they've never had an issue that I'm aware of.
I'm like, wow, really?
This special legislation, does it come from us, or does it come from town meeting? Does the town have to approve this?
The Board of Selectmen would draft it, and it would go to town meeting.
So the town would ultimately decide in the end anyway.
Right. If the local licensing authority, which is this board, supports that, then you would put together a petition.
What's, do we know the turnaround time for us voting on this and then getting it into the ABCC or whoever's going to his hands, and then getting a turnaround? And my question is, would we have this back by the end of June for a town meeting?
Right, for town meeting.
Do we know?
Well, it would be something that we would draft, town council would work with me.
Right, but the order is we vote first.
Put it on the warrant.
Well, we vote, the three of us vote first, right?
You could do that tonight.
And then we send the letter to Boston? Or does that not happen until after town meeting?
That's after town meeting.
Oh, okay. I thought it was, one could get the ball rolling. Okay, all right.
The board supports that.
Personally, I have no problem with this. So I guess I'll make a motion to accept the request for an additional package store in the town of Hatfield for the Hatfield Center Store.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
This is extending their existing beer and wine to all...
Hard liquor.
All hard liquor.
But they would still have to apply for it, Mike.
Right.
They would have to apply. If ABCC grants that additional license, they would have to apply for it.
And it's not doing away, it's not a new, a whole new license where there would also still be a beer and wine license?
No, it would become a new license.
So there would still be a beer and wine license that would be unused?
Right, you're right. Then there would be a beer and wine license available.
Okay, motion made. I mean, the only comment, since the town will ultimately decide, I don't have a problem with it. So, motion made, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Okay.
The town's going to ask you, why did you recommend it, though? It's one of the solve.
Competition's good for business.
Continued old business. I do want to say that we're finally getting the steps done. It's been a process. But the steps started today, construction's on the steps. So I believe Phil said, what, a couple of weeks for the steps? Is that what Phil said, Marlene?
I believe he said two weeks.
Two weeks. So, right now, anybody coming to town hall for the next two weeks, use the side door, back door, because everything in the front is blocked. And, okay, and what else do we have on renovation for the update?
Town hall renovations, so everybody should have, everybody, the three of you should have received a draft copy of the specifications that I had received from the architect. On Friday, I received an email from them. I thought what was included in the specifications was just what they were labeling as a draft copy of the prevailing wages. They hadn't requested the prevailing wages. So they had contacted me, and so I made that request to the Department of Labor Friday and received it, matter of fact, within probably an hour and a half. So I turned it around to them on late Friday afternoon, and...
They're going out to bid this week, right?
Well, what they're doing is the same procedure. I wasn't familiar with this procedure for the first phase. I wasn't here then. It's a bid online document, and so contractors, subcontractors can access the notification. It's going into the central register, I believe, next week. And, or actually, it might be this Wednesday, because they submitted it last week. So I think it's for publication this week.
And did the COA make a final decision on when they're moving or where they're going?
I'm still worried. I reached out to the diocese last week. They have the agreement that our town council had recommended a very minor change to. I reached out to Mr. LeBrod, who is the finance director for the diocese, and I have not heard back from him yet.
Okay, so as far as the diocese, there's still one change that has to be approved?
A very minor change. If they're okay with that, then the Board of Selectmen can sign off on that agreement.
Good question from the public. So what do we have appropriated and earmarked for the costs to support the costs of this phase of the town hall renovation at this point? And that's one question. Does the architect at this time still feel as though that amount of money is adequate for this phase?
Well, I think, you know, the architect has said it's going to be an aggressive bid process. And depending on the time of the year, you know, timing is everything, as you know. So I guess, he didn't really give us an answer one way or another. There are alternates that we have decided to, you know, take some items and make them as alternate. So if the bids come in reasonably, and we can include those alternates, we will. It's approximately a $1.6 million project.
And that's, we have $1.6 million earmarked, and we're appropriated at this point.
Right, well, keep in mind, Mike, we voted the money two years ago.
Right.
I think that was two years ago. Depending on what the price of materials are two years later.
Right, and we also used some of the town hall stabilization fund. So will that impact?
There was some money. The two votes two years ago, both, one was for a million, the other was for $325,000. Those were dead exclusion overrides.
Right, but we also put some money into the stabilization.
Yes, we did, a few years ago.
We took $100,000, I think, $100,000 out in...
In January.
January, so, you know...
And that's part of what we're looking to put back once we get free cash.
Okay, so that's one of the things, just, I didn't hear Marlene say that when she was going through her list.
Stabilization Town Hall Fund, $50,000.
Right. Yeah, there was money funded for the intention of using it for the project.
Once the bids come in, then we'll have an idea. Once the bids come in, then we'll know a little bit more.
No, but I think Mike's question was legitimate, and that is something that we all, that night in January at the special town meeting, said we were going to do. We're going to start, rightfully so, replenishing those accounts. It might not be in one lump sum, but we're good chunks, and there's half of it planned on going back.
And the construction schedule is...
They're looking at the, they're looking at the middle of July, starting construction.
And how long?
They've estimated to April. I was surprised to see that. That was... That's stretching it, but they're the architect and...
And the state architectural access board is okay with that?
I have not talked to the architectural access board. Kevin had said that he had been in touch with them.
What I understand, as long as they're seeing process and the bids and construction starting, then... Okay, Topic number 12. Cindy, your liaison, is that yours?
Thanks for the pictures.
I put it on there, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of paperwork that's been coming through on that, the meetings, and I've gotten yours.
The state DOT had to get involved because that is the state road.
Yeah, I guess my biggest concern, to make it short, et cetera, is the... Yes, it'd be nice to have the bus service going through. They've come a long way. They're changing rates. They're trying to make more money. They're changing the routes a little bit to save money. It's still not really profitable, and as far as our costs, that's what my concern is. They provide the bus stop, but they do not provide, like, the required sidewalks or the other things that are required with that. The state requires sidewalks. They require X amount of footage from the road. They require where it stops, it has to be after a roadway or an intersection or a driveway so people can walk behind the bus instead of in front of the bus. And they also like to have a matching bus stop on the opposite side of the road. So a lot of those things, such as the main location, there's two locations in Hatfield. One is in front of the Old Danko Building, the other is up by, I think it's 191, by the old motel that's by the corner of, by La Mirage, and then there was another one across the street. And so that one isn't the main one, that would be a secondary one. But the one by Danko, that would probably be the one that would work out and to do first if we could. Like I said, however, they pay for only the bus shelter.
Right.
And right now, they are talking with the state to see what the state will approve and who will cover what. But a lot of this sometimes falls on the owner of the land. So even though it's Danko and there's the medical building next door, they're looking for these people to pay, like, the medical building part of these costs for the cement and the other, and the groundwork, et cetera, to do. So that's part of what's taking so long, is to see what the state will do. And then they ask the property owners to do the rest. And the property owners will be interested if it'll help their business, I'm sure, but I don't see them wanting to put in money if it's not going to help, you know, their situation. So hopefully, it'll work out. We don't have any answers at this point, again, you know?
Yeah, could I ask you a question? Who asks the property owners, the bus company or the town?
The bus company, FRTA has already been in touch with them.
Been communicating with them?
Gotcha.
And I just received an email, Cindy, you received it as well, from Rowley, the representative from FRTA? And so the feedback from DOT was a lot quicker than he had expected. And so Rowley would like to set up a meeting to meet with, you know, Phil, you, and I. So we just need to, you know, square away a date for them to do that.
Brian, I just want to, I don't remember back quite a few years ago, that the Board of Selectmen did inquire with the businesses out there, and they said they would contribute if there was a bus coming through. They would be very interested in doing that. So we did ask them quite a few years ago, but I don't know if that...
And there's even a few more businesses now than there were a few years ago, so that bodes well.
Yeah, they were at the time interested.
But it does appear where they're recommending the sidewalk and stuff is 5 and 10 responsibility.
It is a state highway, yes.
Because 5 and 10 is so many feet from the road, it's their right of way. So I don't know if they can ask the property owners when they have the right of way on that land, but that's another issue.
Well, I was just going to say, Big Y, you know, in Northampton there, they put in the new sidewalks for people who frequently visit Big Y, the shopping plaza there, Walmart. It's a very similar situation.
Oh, do we have any unanticipated new business?
I do not.
Motion to adjourn?
Have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.